Holy and righteous father, we come before thee today. On this beautiful day. In this beautiful city in which we live. We're thankful father for Mayor Williams and this city council. For the direction that they seek to give to us as citizens of this city. Bless them father with wisdom. Bless them father with understanding. To be able to make good decisions that will help the progress father of East Ridge. Father, we are grateful that we were kept free from harm yesterday in the storms. We know father that there were those in Alabama that. Suffered from tornadoes and the loss of life and property. Bless those people there father. We also pray today dear Lord that you would be with our nation. We pray father for your will to be done in all things. We pray father for our president and those who work with him. And we pray dear Lord that you will help us. To exalt your son, to exalt your word. And to be the righteous nation that you can bless. Father, we pray that you will be with us now through the rest of this day. Use us in your service and for your glory. We pray through Jesus our Lord and our Savior and amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. Roll call Ms. Middleton.
Mayor Williams.
Here.
Vice Mayor Chauncey.
Here.
I couldn't hear you through the door.
Here.
Councilmember Cagle.
Here.
Councilmember Hilton.
Here.
Councilmember Witt.
Here.
City manager Dorsey.
Here.
City attorney Litchford.
Here.
All right, we'll move to item four consent agenda. Assume everyone's had an opportunity to read and review the minutes of March 11th, 2021 council meeting. And the declaration of surplus property. Fire parks wreck. I'll entertain a motion for the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion to approve by councilmember Hilton in a second by councilmember Witt. Do we have any discussion or corrections? I see now roll call Ms. Middleton.
Vice Mayor Chauncey.
Yes.
Councilmember Cagle.
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton.
Yes.
Councilmember Witt.
Yes.
Mayor Williams.
Yes. Move to item five communications from citizens. This is an opportunity for citizens or business owners within. The city of East Ridge to come forward. With any questions, comment toward the council. Everyone will have five minutes. Did we get the signup sheet out? For our two. Thank you. Okay, the first one is Ryan Darling. Yes, if you'll come forward and restate your name and your address please for the record.
My name is Ryan Darling and I live on 4117 Briar Street. Out in the Belvoir area. Okay, I wrote this out. Good afternoon, city council and city council members and Mayor Williams. My name is Ryan Darling. I am a resident of East Ridge and born and raised and currently in the Belvoir area. This morning, I was extremely disappointed when I read about your reactions to housing the homeless here in East Ridge. To see headlines that read, East Ridge representatives blast Chattanooga's plan to house homeless as just wrong. Is quite disturbing and embarrassing as a resident of the city. This, this program is an opportunity for folks to be able to have a safe room with a lock. Access to social services and a chance to get back on their feet. During a pandemic and tornado season, having safe shelter may be more important than ever. Why would we not support this? Is it fear of crime, fear of outsiders, discrimination? The city of East Ridge continues to ask for economic growth and new business developments. With those growth and developments, we will continue to see more outsiders. We will have more residents needing more social services. And homelessness will only continue to grow as housing prices increase. Many people don't realize this, but without an address, it is extremely difficult to access social services like food stamps. Unemployment, medical care, and even the stimulus checks. Being able to offer three months of housing to over a hundred members of the homeless population is a wonderful opportunity. We should react with gratitude to FEMA and the city of Chattanooga to be able to offer this service in our city. Instead, the negative initial reaction by the mayor, city council and county, city commissioner and council members is. Pretty embarrassing and it makes me question the values of the city of East Ridge. I know this came as a surprise to you, but your public facing reaction was very inappropriate. As leaders, it is your responsibility to set a good example for the community. Responding with fear and hate instead of acceptance and growth is not what I want to see in the leaders of my city. I ask that you reconsider your initial concerns and see how harmful your denial of this service looks to our children. Our neighbors and our community at large. As a resident of East Ridge, I am happy to support housing homeless population in hotels and in our city. And I ask for your support as well. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, sir. During my communication with council members, I do have a couple of things I'm going to say in regards to that current situation. I'll move to the next Diane Stevens. Again, if you'll restate your name and your address, please.
My name is Diane Stevens and I live at 5334 Cynell Street. I have had a lot of issues where we have lived. We've had to call the police out many a times.
We're, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but we're having a hard time hearing you. And it may be the mask. I don't know if you can get closer to the. Okay, I wasn't asking you to take it off, but that's fine. You can. You're, you're, you're in social distancing. You're fine.
Okay, I'm not good at public speaking, so.
It's okay.
It was for some.
You're perfectly fine.
Okay, so I address all of you council. As Mayor Brian Williams, you and I, we've had meetings in the past about the situation where we live. We had an issue on the 19th where I had to call the police again. Because he was playing his loud music and woke my husband up at 1:30 in the morning. We were, I spoke to the officer, I had the police come out. And he did not write him a citation. And I was told that in the past that if he had to, they had to come out. That they would write him a citation and he said, well, this is the first time I've come out here. So we have had continual issues in the past. It's not, it's an ongoing thing. And since the warm weather is coming up. I mean, he's been quiet and he, and then he had his cars. He'd park his car in the driveway, which is understandable. But he would turn on his engine and he would run it for 45 minutes and after a while, our. Our house is only 10 feet and the fume started coming into the. Into the room and everything and I mean, it just. It's one thing after another. I called another day and that was like at 8:30 in the evening. When about this, the fumes coming into the home and, and everything and it's. I just don't know what's gonna happen next. I mean, we called the police. Now he's put his cars out. I've asked the police to come by continually in the evenings. I mean, do the patrol and everything, which I have seen that happen. And, but I don't want to have to keep going into the police, calling them and saying, please come down here to, you know. A citation needs to be written. Something needs to be done so that he will get the idea, hey, if I do this again, I'm going to be cited. And, you know, something's going to be done, you know, about this. I just, we've had, and Mayor Brian Williams, you know the story and.
Yes ma'am.
So you can address them and tell them what I have gone through and. Like I said, I'm not very good at standing up.
You're fine.
So, but that, I had to do it, Rob. Robinson came out, the officer, very nice. I have it on my camera. I spoke to him. I wanted a citation written because the chief had told us that if this happened again, that he'd get a citation. He said, well, this is the first time I've come out on this call and he didn't give him one. And he said the noise, he could hear the noise, the radio, he had to go through our gate and everything and. And he told me and the guy said, well, I'm just trying to fix my radio at 1:30 in the morning. I mean, you know, and you wake, I saw about 1:30 in the morning and, you know. There's, there's just something that's caught to be done. I'm just, we're kind of like our wit's ends. I don't, you know what I mean?
Yes ma'am.
So that's. And I have lived there, just to let you know, I have lived there about 25 years as a resident. And he is a tenant. He doesn't own the house. The landlord doesn't want to do anything. I wish there was something. That, I mean, he needs to be helping the country. That's just my personal opinion, you know. But if he wants to conduct his business, he wants to run a business or whatever he wants to do, fine, but do it during the regular hours. I mean, this midnight, 11 o'clock after 11 is wrong. And then during the, then in the evening, he'll want to blast his music, the bass in these cars that are so loud, you know. That's, that's just uncalled for, you know. And we've had that issue. And then with the, the other issue was with the exhaust that was close to our house and leave, and leaves his car running for. You know, it was like 45 minutes or more. So, I mean, what do you, what do you do? I guess that's, that's just Michael.
Well, thank you. I believe during some of the meetings we had, we did have the chief of police and I believe you as well. City manager Dorsey. So I don't know if you want to address it or if you want to get more information since it's just been brought and then get back to Ms. Stevens, but I'll leave it up to you.
You did a very good job presenting, by the way. Yes, let me get some more information from you. Matter of fact, our assistant chief just popped his head in back here. So he missed what you said, but let me get some more information from you and find out what the, the status is on that right now, especially I know. They're, they're going to say they have to witness it, but you said they have. They have to witness it in order to be able to write the citation. I know.
They didn't write the citation because I came up afterwards. I mean, at 1:30 in the morning, you're, you're not thinking.
Right.
You know what I mean? I didn't even think about until after he'd gone and all that and he quieted down and, and now he's been parking his cars out on the road, which. Fine, but don't start your, don't start that, that base, you know, issue. I don't know what you call that in your vehicles when, you know, there's a boombox or, I mean, I don't know.
A woofer, yeah, yeah.
Woofer, okay.
Well, let me get some more information. Matter of fact, if you just stopped by and talked to assistant chief Ustleton right back there. Give them some of that information and we'll set up a meeting so we can find out more about what's going on now. I know I've heard about this in the past, but find out what's going on now so we can see what we need to do to move forward with you.
I mean, he'd been quiet since the 19th. I mean, you know, but I never know day by day, you know what I'm saying?
Right.
And, and how he can. But whatever.
Okay, well, thank you. The chief will, assistant chief will help you right there. Thank you.
Thank you. That's all we had on the actual signup sheet. However, anyone else is more than welcome. Yes, come forward. I was. You're fine. And now I was going to say anybody else that wanted to come forward definitely can come. Please state your name and your address.
I live on 1413 Dover Lane. And I came to, to talk about the homeless issue with, at the budget hell. And mine's more of a, a point of concern and just have some questions that I think we should ask the city of Chattanooga. On their intentions and what their whole goal was behind this. And again, I'm terrible at this, so I'm going to do my best to get through it. So. I drive by the budget hell every day. Like I'll work on Max Smith Road and I live right here off Ringgold Road. And I know the condition that I see that area in and the outside of it in. And from what I understand, this is going to be a temporary thing until June. So I mean, what's the whole goal here? Like, are we just, are there that many people that just need a place to live for a couple of months? Like, is there no like plan to, you know, permanently house them elsewhere? Is East Ridge, is East Ridge that plan? I don't know with the condition that that place is in on the inside, but I've been in these places. I don't know if you're familiar with the housing projects near the Sitgo off of Market Street that was demolished. The past couple, within the past year or two. Is that, you know what I'm talking about? The one near the Sitgo downtown. I live next to that on 1411 Mitchell Avenue, which is just like four houses down from it. And I've seen the condition and the types of environment that this creates. You know, living next to it and I mean, that in itself is of an issue. I know Chattanooga has larger police force to deal with issues that arise at these places. I don't know what. East Ridge capability is, but I do know the size of the building and it's about a tenth, if not less than, you know. What camel, or you know, the city of Chattanooga is capable of. So I mean, that's a concern where you're, I know there are 25 homeless people living there right now and their plan is to bring 75 more. Just from what I've read. So I mean, that's a pretty large increase on, to do all at once and expect. The East Ridge Police Department to just take it as they are, you know, without any additional resources. So I mean, that's just a couple of questions that I think we should be, you know, asking them like. It doesn't sound like they were in communication about this with any of you from what I've read. So I mean, it just seems like they're passing the buck a little bit to East Ridge and just expecting us to, you know. Stand by and just, you know, let them dictate what the issues are and stuff. And like I said, I've been in these places. They're not a step above living on the streets. You've got bedbugs to deal with, like, you know, neighbors that you are getting close communication with every day who aren't in their right. You know, faculties. And I mean, it can just cause an issue, like how much is this really helping somebody, taking them out of their environment? That they're already used to, you know, with the resources that they're already used to and placing them somewhere else just for a couple of months. Like, we'll see what happens then. I guess you're going to tell them afterwards. But I don't know, like I. This, like I said, this is my first time. It just seemed kind of weird. And I just thought there were more questions that needed to be asked for, before this was allowed to, you know, go through. And I just wanted to bring a voice to it as a concerned citizen of East Ridge. And I don't know if I have much else than that, so I'll leave it to you guys. Thank you and.
Thank you, thank you. Again. During the council member, any other council members that would like to comment, I do have a few things that I was going to say as well, so. I'll ask if there's anyone else who'd like to come forward. I see no one else, so we will move into communications from council members. So I'll start on this side. Councilmember Cagle.
No, sir. The only thing I've got to say is. I didn't like the way that I found out about it, okay? I didn't like the way that we found out about it. I'm sure everybody else in here found out about the same time that I did. That's the disgruntled, I believe if they had come to us. Tried to work out an agreement with us that we, both of us as councils, we would have worked out together and found a place to put these people. I know we've got homeless out here, but we don't have 100 homeless. I can. Tell you is where I see the tents and where I see the people living from and coming from. But this, I don't know, I don't know if it breaks my heart, but I didn't like the way Chattanooga did not confront us. So we as a council, we're going to work on this. We're going to decide what we're going to do, how we're going to handle it. And I hope Chattanooga can work with us.
Thank you, sir. Vice Mayor Chauncey.
Yeah, I agree with councilmember Cagle. I did not like the, the, the way they miscommunicated with, with the city of East Ridge. I did have some other concerns, not necessarily regard, regarding the homeless situation. I know you'll get into that a little bit later, but I had a question for the. City attorney Mark Litchford and as it relates to the budget hell. If, what, what do we know about the allegations that were presented to us as far as them being in violation of their current extended stay ordinances?
So we have been through discussions with the owner in the past. Short of it is, there has, we have exchanged letters with the owner of the property. We have engaged in dialogue. I know Kenny Custer and I met about two weeks ago with, with what's going on there. With, we got to be a little bit vague because there, there's always a specter of whether or not there's going to be litigation that arises from it. So we're not going to say anything that's in any way going to implicate us. City has been looking into it. This is not the first time that we just got noticed. But we have been working with them, trying to facilitate. The city tries to operate from a compliance standpoint rather than come from an adversarial. It has worked for several, several years since we've been working on the AHO or to the Housing Commission. In this case, this is a code enforcement that sort of. What came up this week was news to us, but I know that Mr. Custer and I have already been meeting and will continue those discussions and make sure that compliance is achieved.
Thank you, Mark. So I have more.
Councilmember Hilton.
Nothing at this time.
Councilmember Witt.
Nothing at this time.
All right. So we truly understand that homeless, that there is a homeless situation and it is, it has risen and it is a regional problem. As several mentioned and as I've made, you know, posts on social media that we were unaware of any of the actions that it was taking place. By the city of Chattanooga. And others found out from a news posting. On social media. Myself and Chris immediately engaged, tried to engage Mayor Burke and the city of Chattanooga administration's staff to gather more information. To the point, we had no clue. We had no idea. Is there a plan? Is there a process? How do the reengage these individuals back into society? What is the, the plan? We had, we had no clue. So naturally we wanted to have a meeting with them immediately. We were unable to have that meeting for about 36, 38 hours. That occurred yesterday. We found out a little bit more information from that, from that discussion of their plans. It was, it was a good discussion. They had decided that they were going to pause and reevaluate. And determine the best possible solution with the involvement of this city if they proceeded to, to go with the hotel in our city. I will say that it should be a mutual interlocal agreement. Chattanooga was, did not consider the burden that they're putting on our taxpayers. For police, fire and other services that could be required at any time. So I too was very disappointed that they did not reach out to our staff or to myself or our council prior to making a unilateral decision. The program is great, no doubt FEMA. That, that is, is no doubt a, a great program that's being put in place. And we're looking and I think city manager has some updates after speaking with staff today at the city of Chattanooga. Concerning possible their, their direction or how they're proceeding, but again. It is not. Easy to make a decision when you have no facts and you're blindsided by an action that you're unaware of that was coming. And try to plan for and to support when you don't know it. So that's, at this point, we have more information. We're still trying to gather. And we will make the best possible solution because we do know that it is, it is a regional and a, a dire need that is within our community, our entire region. So Chris may have more information about that. The other thing I wanted to mention in my communication is also the closure, which started this morning. Of the westbound tunnel, Botman Tunnel due to the lines, the slide we had from the, the weather. It's closed with, they've closed down the west side and it should be reopened within a few weeks. I know that sounds, that's long, but around April the 16th, I believe, two to three weeks to perform. The work that they're planning on doing to reinforce, put mesh wire and reinforce that to help protect any future sliding and. Again, very, very grateful. We didn't have any damage and glad that it, we were prepared and didn't occur then not prepared and it did occur and we. Our hearts goes out to the people in Alabama who now has been hit twice within the last couple of weeks. And I do encourage everyone to be prepared for the additional severe weather they're saying that's possibly coming tomorrow, tomorrow evening. So that's all that I have at this time. I'll pass it off to city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. I had a couple of people joke to me about the tunnel today saying, you know, it's, it's a, it's the reason it's happening is because we'll let you all in, but we won't let you leave. So eastbound lanes obviously coming into East Ridge are open. It's just the westbound lanes leaving that we're having the issue. I did talk to T-Dollar more today about that. I'll start with that. As you said, they're going to be probably close to about the 16th and the rerouting will be down Germantown Road. We're in discussions with Chattanooga's traffic engineering division to, to help monitor like the light that's right there at Germantown and South Terrace and all that. To, to help make sure that, you know, if it starts backing up, do we need to adjust the timing of the signals and things of that nature? So, so they're, they're helping to cooperate with that too. So we're looking, looking forward to that. Okay, I'll start off. I just want to thank everybody for the condolences. For those that don't know, my father passed away on Sunday. So I've been up in, up in Richmond dealing with, with issues with that and I just appreciate everybody reaching out and, and expressing their condolences on that. So I just want to thank everybody for that. We're busy working on our budgets right now. We're starting to get our numbers together. We should start looking at revenues in the next week or two, once we get past March, right? Because you want to get good fresh numbers Diane, you said.
I want to have nine.
This quarter. We're slowly moving forward with that, which is good. And I'll talk a little bit about the, well, two other things first, I'm sorry. Cam Jordan Parkway is underwater now, right? The very entrance. It's, I believe the water is just rising for about another 20, well, less than 24 hours. I should start going back down again. From what I saw on the map. So that is closed. I'm about, but due to unfortunate me being out of town a lot during the last two weeks, I'm about a third of the way through looking through the liquor applications. For those that don't know, we had 18 applications that were turned in. There were four for district A and there were 14 for district B. So I'm working my way through those and hopefully we'll be able to stay on the timetable that we have for that, that second meeting in April to, to move forward, to move forward on that. Talking back about the homeless, the homeless issue that we've been dealing with, as the mayor said, we found out about it on Thursday, I mean, on Tuesday afternoon. I was up at Richmond and my phone started blowing up at that point. We were caught flat footed. We had no knowledge of any of this that was going on. With that being said, we tried to start. Scheduling meetings with the mayor of Chattanooga and with the administration of Chattanooga to start looking into the issue. We weren't able to get that meeting scheduled with them until yesterday morning, till Thursday morning. Meeting lasted a little under an hour. We, we discussed some, it was a very positive discussion on the, the side of the city of East Ridge and Chattanooga. It was very good dialogue. We just brought up some of our concerns. They didn't realize we had extended stay ordinances. There might also be some, and we never even had to get into this part. There might've been some legalities about a, a city operating services outside their city in another city without interlocal, interlocal agreements, as the mayor mentioned earlier. So some of these questions also popped up, which would, which might throw a wrench into what they're doing. I talked to Tyler Yount this afternoon dealing with this issue. He told me that Chattanooga is looking at the second, they're still planning on providing those services, but they're looking at. Moving forward with the second lowest bidder within the city, which is within the city of Chattanooga to move forward on. Helping these, these individuals. We all realize there's a homes problem. We see it every day. We have to make sure that we have some homeless that are right there on Ringo Road under my spring, under Spring Creek. When the water starts rising, we get very concerned about their well-being. We have a $15 million general fund budget. Chattanooga has a much, much larger budget, so they're fortunate to be able to have. A social services department, for lack of a better word, community services, social services that can help with this issue a lot better than East Ridge. We have been so fortunate in this city to have churches and nonprofits. And people with good hearts like that, that have gone out and reached out to help these homeless people, which has been. Such a, such a godsend for us here in East Ridge to be able to have that. So we're very, very fortunate to have the, the quality of the people that we have in the city to be able to help with that. So I just wanted to, to let you know that that's where that stands. They are planning on moving forward with a, I hope, with the second. To let you know that that's where that stands. They are planning on moving forward with a, I hope with the second. The second lowest bid that they had, which was a hotel within the city of Chattanooga to move forward this. If there is any more dialogue in the future, we talked about maybe there's things we could do with the county or things of that nature. Or in other cooperation later on to maybe look at what we can do about helping with this homeless problem.
Partnering.
Partnering with with either one of them. So it was a very constructive conversation we had with Chattanooga. We. We value the relationship we have with Chattanooga. We get along very well. They've helped us, as Andy can attest with the census.
Absolutely.
Things of that nature and just whenever there's some, some issues like that, that we have very good working relationship and good dialogue and we're fortunate for that and we hope to continue to have that. And that's all I have.
Thank you, sir. All right, we'll move into old business. Item A, ordinance number eleven forty five.
An ordinance, the city council of the city of East Ridge, Tennessee, to amend the fiscal year twenty twenty one operating budget. Ordinance number one, one, two, nine for various expenditures in the general fund and drug fund using fund balance.
This wouldn't be the second and final reading.
No changes.
No changes.
No changes.
Okay. I will entertain a motion for ordinance number eleven forty five.
Motion to approve ordinance eleven forty five.
I already have a motion to approve by Vice Mayor Chauncey and a second by Councilmember Hilton. Is that correct? Okay, I I heard, but I didn't, I wanted to make sure I got it right. Thank you. Any discussion? I see an enroll call, Ms. Middleton.
That's Mayor Chauncey.
Yes.
Councilmember Cagle?
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton?
Yes.
Councilmember Whit?
Yes.
Mayor Williams?
Yes. Move to item nine, new business, which number A, resolution number three, one, two, eight.
A resolution of the city council of the city of East Ridge, Tennessee, approving a temporary special events beer permit for Randy Carpenter on behalf of Clyde Masters Productions.
So.
Yes, Mayor and Council. So Randy Carpenter has applied for a special events beer permit for the Chattanooga Firefighters Association. Benefit concert that'll be Sunday night in the arena. And that is what this, this resolution is about.
Thank you, sir.
Mayor.
Yes.
They're in the meeting, too, if you have any questions.
Oh.
Carpenter.
Thank you. I'm, well, I'll go ahead and I'll ask up front. Does anyone have any questions for the applicant? Yes, sir.
Is the Masters Productions going to furnish the security?
No, they could hear us. Order.
Do you hear me, Candy?
Yeah, no one's ever brought up security before.
Okay. I think it's in our ordinance that you either have to hire the East Ridge Police Department or some kind of security has got to be furnished. So. Is Masters gonna be doing it? Because I didn't see a letter in here from Stan stating that the police were being hired from him. So I was wondering about the security and everybody knows I'm against beer in the park, but we passed an ordinance, so. Me being against beer in the park is a different thing. Now I'm trying to take care of the park. So who's, who's gonna furnish the security?
Jackie, the the entertainers provide. They pay for the security that comes. And normally they pay the city, then the city compensates the security. And if we say we need this, we need to go ahead and set up some people. That will be on call, you know, every time there's something like this.
Usually when we have a special event like that, the event operator will get with our assistants. Chief Ustleton and I'll follow up with him after this meeting and see if that has transpired. If it hasn't, then I'll get with Clyde and Masters Productions and see if we can go ahead and get that lined up for this weekend.
Yeah. Know that he has to pay compensate, you know, for this, so.
He always did at the other places where we've had events. He's always handled that part. So I don't, I don't know why.
So I didn't check on that to see what it is. I've also asked the the fire marshal, he's, I think he's around the corner. To maybe, not maybe, but to to be on standby for this weekend, too, because there's also COVID restrictions. That are in place for this event to help make sure that the the new occupancy level is maintained and the distancing and all, all the things that was part of the contract. Now, that's not them. That's dealing with Clyde Masters Productions. That has nothing to do with the beer. I just want to mention that as well.
On coming out around six or six thirty.
Yeah. We are gonna be sure they have security, whether it's Clyde Masters Furnishment or City Police, I mean, the city of East Ridge.
Yes.
They they will come in so strong that you have somebody to maintain the front door. They'll just. You'll look up and there's four hundred people just walked in the building if you're not careful.
Talking about. It will, it'll be taken care of.
Jackie, you got anything else?
No, sir. That was it, the security, because I didn't see a letter from our police chief, so.
Okay.
That was it.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I guess about the security. I don't know if we're gonna hire off duty police officers. I know we're already short.
That's usually what the event operator does. They will get with the assistant chief and and schedule that at their hourly rate. It's an off duty officer usually.
Yeah, we'll, we'll get you a name. How's that sound? Maybe not for this one, but you know, this is what they do and they, they're all over Tennessee. They will get you a. Number and stuff and they're really more reasonable than anyone else.
Okay.
All right.
All righty.
Thank, thank you. I'll entertain a motion for resolution number three, one, two, eight.
Make a motion to approve resolution three, one, two, eight.
Motion by Vice Mayor Chauncey and a second by Councilmember Whit. Do we have any other discussion? I seen an enroll call, Ms. Middleton.
That's Mayor Chauncey.
Yes.
Councilmember Cagle?
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton?
Yes.
Councilmember Whit?
Yes.
Mayor Williams?
Yes. Resolution number three, one, two, eight approved. Move to item B, discussion, take action for construction of dog park.
Yes, Mayor, I asked for this item to be on the agenda. I'm gonna. I'm still obtaining some more information on some donations and and some other things. I want to ask to move this to our April eighth. Agenda.
All right. Thank you, sir. We'll move to April eighth. I will move to item C, discussion of tentative agenda items for April eighth. Twenty twenty one council meeting. So underneath old business, we would have none. Under new business, we have a unnumbered resolution appointment to zoning appeals board. And that would be for Councilmember Hilton? I'm sorry?
I thought you were pointing at me.
You're moving out of the line of fire. Then item B would be another unnumbered resolution for the appointment of the zoning appeals board for Councilmember Whit. Again, these will be advertised like we've done with our. Our initiative for our boards for submit applications. So. That will be coming up for the next meeting. Then item C, another unnumbered resolution, RFP for installation of playground equipment, being opening April first, twenty twenty one. Wilson?
Yes, Mayor and Council. We recently went out for for bid for the playground and splash pad equipment. That will be installed hopefully later this summer. We made the the purchase of the playground equipment just last count, after last council meeting. This is for the installation of that equipment.
Thanks, sir. And I'll just go ahead and mention the next ones, the next unnumbered resolutions, a bid for the utilities at the playground and splash pad, which bids opening April one, twenty twenty one.
Yes, sir. So this splash pad requires utility hookup to run the the water to the splash pad. And so this is the utilities installation bid.
Okay. Any questions, counsel, on those, too? I wouldn't kind of combine those since they're the same type project. Any questions? Yes, ma'am. Okay. All right. Well, that is all the items that we have on the tentative agenda for April eighth. Do we have any other items we'd like to discuss?
I I would like to add an item on the agenda first. I'd like to bring up the discussion again about having a zone C at exit one area for a third liquor store. Look at the district A, we had four people apply, district B, which is on the east side. There was fourteen applications. I think we all know that. That's where everybody wants. Possibly opening up a zone C.
All right. Do I? Any of there, anything else, counsel?
This liquor store has been brought up. I've noticed on the applications on that end down there. Four people applied with the same address.
Right?
Four different people are in the process of buying that and whichever one gets drawn for the lottery gets it.
On that one, on one of those particular addresses, there's some of the same properties. That the, you know, the the realtors or whoever they got in touch with marketed for this endeavor. So you may have, like you said, there might be four different people that are looking at the same property, but they did it. And I may get the terminology wrong. Vice Mayor may help me because he's in real estate. The, if they got a contingency contract, I say it right, a contingency contract on that property. So that if they're the ones selected for the liquor store, then they would be the ones that would buy it as opposed to buying it. Right now, they have what's called a contingency contract on that property. So yeah, you got four people interested in one property. I think there's. On the west side, there, I mean, excuse me, District A, I think there's three people interested in one, in the same property. So it's the same sort of thing because they're looking at at redeveloping those parcels.
Okay. I just wondered, that just seemed kind of funny, especially with all of them last names saying. And another question. Are we gonna have a third party running the drawing?
Yes, we've mentioned that before. We're gonna have our, the independent auditor will be doing that. We are not touching that.
Our auditor?
Yes.
Okay.
Any other? Yes.
On that note, I will have a resolution for the contract for the audit, the twenty twenty one audit. It's time again. So I'll be bringing that forward to you again. And it'll be at the first meeting in April, so we can go ahead and get that approved at the state. And we'll start doing our preliminary stuff that we have to do. Audit is never ending.
Understand. Anything else? I hear nothing else, so I will move to adjourn this meeting. Hope everyone has a very good weekend and stay safe, please. Meeting adjourned.